One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Ask the quarter trade to call the row.
Barnes, Bradley, here, Hastings.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
Pistol.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Entertain a motion second to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
That's for a vote.
Warren.
Yes.
Bradley, yes, Hastings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Pistol.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
This time I'll entertain a motion second to approve the minutes for January third and January thirteenth meeting and also the monthly five actions as prepared.
I'll make a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Seconding discussion. I'll ask for a vote.
Barnes.
Yes.
Bradley, yes, Hastings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Pistol.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Brings us down to Department head reports, airport commission. I don't know if there's a lot going on, we have a meeting coming up Thursday the seventeenth, this coming Thursday. It's eleven o'clock, so. Are you good for that? Thursday at eleven? That's about all I have on the airport now, I sure, I thought Jason might be here, I tell you, I don't know if he has.
Things are going well. They just completed the Chiffin Seal project on some ramp repairs and that sort of thing. Just, things are fine.
Thank you. Brings us down to animal control, just got a report from Lori. Had twenty-two dogs currently and eight cats in the facility, four dogs were transported last Saturday and three more are gonna leave this coming Tuesday, they're kind of went on down. I have the kennels, there's I think five, five doors we're repairing right now, those are to be repaired by the end of the weekend and maybe in place by next Tuesday. We had some trouble with kennels getting torn up, but I'm working on that, that won't cost the city anything, I got someone to volunteer their expertise on that. That's about all I have on animal control, and I was gonna mention Jay, do you have anything on?
We had, for this month, January, we had five calls, we picked up two dogs and two cats, and we got one of the cats returned to the owner.
I picked up a dog last night on my front porch, but I found the owner, so I was happy about that. Also, I've talked to Lori, Sammy asked me that, we're on the animal control committee, and talked to Lori a couple of times about the transfer, it'll be here before we know it halfway through the year. And was contacted by a lady from Fairfield Bay that wants to meet with me, and she volunteers over there, she's in that, and she was giving some names, I said, local folks, I appreciate that, and she's gonna meet with me this coming week. Anybody that, when she comes over, I will call y'all, if anybody's interested in helping, I know Sammy and I have got, I just told them we got a lot of legwork to do that. Also, I'll talk to the county judge about the facility out there, maybe, that's kind of the plan I'm going for right now. That's a big problem that I look forward to tackling and solving. And that's all I had on that, brings us to fire department, Chief DL Webb.
We had a grass fire this month on sixteen west, had another one on Blossom Loop. We had a fire call out at Pedigine Electric, which was just a false alarm, they pulled it by accident. We had a call for a structural fire at the laundromat down here in town, it was smoke coming from behind the washer. We did have a structural fire up on Walker's Way, which destroyed a shop and a personal vehicle. We've worked concession stands at the basketball game for the Clinton schools this month. That's pretty much what we've been this month. I've got a couple of ideas or things here I want to throw across to y'all right quick. I'd like to get with whoever's on the board for the fire department, discuss maybe developing a plan to build a new station, get started on a station for the truck that we purchased, and maybe even looking into replacing the ladder truck that we had downtown, getting another one for that. There's a couple of things, like the COVID money, I brought, I thought about that, talking with a bond company, trying to get a bond, so something that we can look at moving the fire department forward now. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer.
Linda's coming in about every other week, Linda Stagg, she'll be in on the twenty-second, I think, and she might be a good resource to utilize, so, but I'll make sure the day she's coming in. Anything else for Chief Webb? Who's on the board?
I am.
The committee.
I am.
You?
Yeah, this is, yeah, you go through City Hall, call DL, and you can call me and say, hey, we're gonna try to meet, you know, Thursday or whatever, down at City Hall where we have the fire station. Okay, thank you, brings us to parks and recs department, Charles Wilson.
We've been working on the ball fields, we've got two of them in pretty good shape, they're actually starting to practice, had a chance to get, they got pretty weather. So, man, we trimmed up a bunch of the crepe myrtles, got a bunch of that done, it won't be long, we'll be swiveling grass. So, arms up, we had a pretty good ice event, and we done the best we could, just me and one other, two other people, but I think we done a decent job, not bad.
You did a good job, and that bleeds into street department, I know, and I think you've sat on that flagpole. In the green softball fields.
It's up with the flag on, said that, got that thing working, it's, it's in the air, has a flag on. We got the lights all mounted on the tennis court, waiting on electrician, we've had them up, got them up, don't know when he's gonna get a chance to wire it in. I got as much part of my part done as I can do, so I'm waiting on him now.
I think we're running to Little Rock next week, a day, and doing a lot of things, I know with that tap grant, I want you down there, we can maybe look around for some lighting, you know, call ahead and look at. Other thing on the parks and recs before I forget it, Luke Kirkendall is, you wouldn't know it, but he's a skateboarder, he's pretty good, he's been after me for a while, said he'd like to move the ramps back, and he called me the other day, he said, I'd like to move them back or one way five feet and re-anchor them, he said, I got all the tools. Talked to me, I said, hey, talk to Charles, and Charles said, hey, it'd be a good idea, we just got a city council meeting coming up in two or three days, that's just okay, and I think it's a great idea, if he knows what he's doing, he's got all the equipment, and a lot of people utilize that skate park, skateboarder, so. I'd, I'd, I just said, I will, I will mention to the council, go ahead and get it in the minutes, maybe get a motion second to allow Luke Kirkendall to modify the ramps at the skate park and re-anchor them, Charles helping him, so.
I'll make a motion to do it.
May not have to have it, but I'd like to get that, or get your approval if everybody's okay with that.
Is there any liabilities, like if somebody like that does that, do you need to inspect it?
I'm not really concerned about liability side, I mean, it's basically volunteer work, I don't know, I mean, I don't know how, I don't know a lot about what this project is, I mean, how heavy these are, this is talking about thousands of pounds.
They're not real heavy, I mean, they're just framed up steel, and I don't know if he's gonna move them apart, or move one closer, gonna move some stuff around, but we still have our liability signs and all that, it's skates, it's rear rims and all that, so.
It's all hard there, I mean, it's, this is basically volunteer, just like any other volunteer.
I should know if somebody come back and put.
Right, well, Charles is there, and it's, you know, we have signs, and I certainly don't know if they need to be five feet closer or longer, how much momentum you need, and.
Oh, he's got liability for the skateboarders afterward, oh, I was thinking more for.
Yeah, no, no accident.
And look, I mean, they're probably just as dangerous now as they will be after they move them five feet, yeah.
And you're trying to stand up for them? So, I'll go ahead, motion second to allow him to help Charles relocate them.
I thought we did that.
We did.
Okay, I'm sorry, any other discussion? I'll ask for a vote.
Barnes.
Yes.
Bradley, yes, Hastings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Pistol.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes. Thank you, anything else in the parks or any questions on that, and just jump right into streets too, anything on street department?
Not, it's, I mean, just other than plow and snow, we've been maintaining and everything, trying to get everything fixed to get with Will, I think he's gonna try to get some vehicles, and then gonna kind of look at some and see what type we wanna get and figure out exactly what kind of truck we wanna get. Then we'll probably take the old plow from the old truck and mount it, fix it to another vehicle, that way we can disconnect it and we'll have two big plows going instead of one two footer.
You did a pretty good job of what you have, you did a real good job, actually, so. One thing that I have, and I did mention it, I think to all y'all and definitely you, that's one reason I went to go down there, I went to talk to our engineer for the tap grant project, and in your budget for twenty twenty-two on streets, we put seventy-four hundred for tap grant, and I made a note on the cheat sheet that we make, and I'm thinking, I may just want to do that in, in February, and it just came in too high, we have sixty-four thousand, fifty-seven thousand, or fifty-four thousand that we can use, and went and talked to the engineer, and I said, look, we could change, if we only change twenty-five percent of it, what I want to do is just rebid it and lower the scope of the project itself, get rid of some of the sidewalks that are on the asphalt and do the hard things, behind the junior high on the hillside, and where we got the easement by the car wash at the four-way, and maybe the sidewalk in front of the cowards sold house, and I think we can come in something reasonable. I got a bill for, almost completed all of his engineering work in September for four thousand dollars, what he had, the net brought it up to date, we've spent up to fifty-one hundred on the whole project up to that point. And I asked him, I said, I don't really wanna pay anybody anything until we really decide what we're gonna do, so he set on this for February the eighth, and he rewrote the bill, and I said, I will, I, I can pay that now, and he's done the work, he's laid the whole project out. I just want, it's over two thousand dollars, it's over, I'll entertain a motion second to pay the bill to the engineer for four thousand from street line item grants slash tap. Is behind the, up behind the bus station on that? No, no, that, that, that grant, just that sidewalk went from the band room in front of the cowards, crosses the four-way, crosses it again, goes behind the junior high building down by, or in Muscar, you know, the.
Goes down by the safety room.
Stacy Givers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Ralph, and then crosses, and went all the way through to the, but if, the real meat of that job is the hillside behind junior high, and that's our number one priority, if we can get that done and a few other things for the grant money available, the school can, just call Sammy and say, give me a bid on doing this sidewalk, bid a lot, gee, that's not something that has to be engineered, but that. That's, but mainly, I'd just like to get him paid, he's been pretty, we just had a hard time, we felt, with the state getting that pushed through, so, I'm just really wanting to pay him, and I'm, we're gonna go down, and I'm gonna pay him, and then I'm gonna take Charles with me and look at a couple of things. I'll make a motion that we pay four thousand dollars to the engineer on a street department line item tap.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? I'll ask for a vote.
Barnes.
Yes.
Bradley, yes, Hastings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Pistol.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else for Charles on streets?
My W S ten down there, the transmission went out, and the radiator chewed the wiring and stuff off of it, I like permission to run it in paper, seal bids on it, sell it.
Jerry Evans, that old.
Yeah. Beds caved in on one side of it, and the top's rusted off of it, so, yeah, if we can get it out of the way, get it out of there.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Make a motion to.
It's in our inventory, I gotta have it.
Make a motion for that.
So what we need to do is make a motion to do that, and also, once it sells, to take it off of his inventory, his asset list, so we don't have to come back and ask for that later.
Can we just get that, like, have somebody come and carry it off, do we have to sell it, I mean, like, can we?
Put my heads, we'll just take all the bids on it.
Somebody will.
If it's a good idea, if anyone come in and put a bid on it, that's great.
You know, we had that a couple of years ago, somebody come into the city and carry off our metal and stuff, or stuff.
If we can sell it.
So we can sell it, so.
Yeah, if we can sell it and make some money on it, great, and somebody may need a part or two of it, who knows? Those trucks are still floating around, they were tough to boot.
Motion second to take bids on purchase and also to remove from inventory after the sale.
I'll make a motion to run the ad and sell the truck and then take it out of inventory. I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Well, motion.
I'm sorry, I can't hear, I'm sorry. I'll ask for a vote.
Dan.
You just want to get the right one.
I got it. Barnes.
Yes.
Bradley, yes, Hastings. Lynch.
Yes.
Pistol.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Before we move on, I just want to say, Charles, I noticed y'all cleared the Beaver Dam again.
Yes, sir, that's a task, that's an ever-ending task, that thing is relentless, you gotta have a buddy.
We gotta get them things out of there, I don't have them to do it, but.
Well, used to, I had a guy that, he would come by and get rid of them for me, but I guess he quit doing it, so I gotta find somebody else.
I got a guy. Well, those have been there for thirty years.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's relentless, he, in fact, it's probably more than just one, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because usually within about a week, it's ready to be tore down again.
Yeah.
I know how they get rid of them several years ago.
And y'all were out early on the, on the ice.
Yeah, I come in about three o'clock, three-thirty that morning, and got to working on it, but really, I mean, it was hard to do anything with.
Yeah, I act like I didn't see you go by.
Just enough. But, I mean, everybody done a great job, everybody spent tons and tons of time and money on it, so, they got it cleared pretty decent.
Well, I was over at the park the other day, and there was no ice, did y'all clear that off, or did it just melt on its own?
It just melted off, all the sun just shines through there, pretty decent, so.
There was like one spot or two, but a lot of it.
And it's not drove over.
Yeah.
That makes a big difference, when nobody drives on it, and it's still kind of fluffed up, it, it blows out twice as fast, but when you drive on it and pack it, it, it turns into just solid ice cubes, and so it's hard to move.
Like a skating rink.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else for Charles? Thank you, brings us to police, the department for, speaking of motions, you can give your report, and then also kind of go through what you.
So, speaking of motions, yes, you guys got my report, the only thing that's changed on that since I sent it out was during the ice, we had zero wrecks on the city streets, thanks to Charles and his crew, we had none on the highway, thanks to the highway department, so that, that's always nice, we usually end up working two or three, so this is the first time in a few years that we've had winter weather that I've not worked any, so that was good. The charger we ordered last year, we're gonna go pick up Monday, so that's finally in, only took a year. Other than that, if you got any questions about my report, I'll have to be to answer that, or we can move on to the other. Okay, so, I would like to sell a truck to the water department, one of our older ones is higher mileage, it's gonna help them out, it's gonna help me out, because Dodge is not making chargers anymore, police chargers. So, I didn't know that when I set our budget for the year, so we're gonna, we're looking at the Ford Interceptor, it's, it's the Interceptor SUV, kind of like what Derek's driving right now, the price point on that is right at thirty-eight thousand, so for the price I'm selling that truck to, to Will and his guys, will offset the price of what I need for this vehicle. So I'd like to be able to do that with y'all's permission, sell it to them for seven thousand. I'd also like approval, it's already budgeted in the budget for these dash and body cameras, the price of that for the year will be seventeen thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars, it's already in the budget, so I'm not asking for any more money, just y'all's permission to spend it, since it didn't get put in a separate line item for that. I would also like to spend fifty-three hundred dollars for our report system, again, it's already budgeted, just not a separate line item, so I just need permission to go ahead and pay for that, since it's over the two thousand dollar limit. I think that's the first motion, right, Dina? No?
Our first motion is to do, uh, two thousand thirteen, Steve wants to sell a two thousand thirteen Dodge Ram van three oh eight one to the Clinton Water Department for seven thousand dollars, take that off of the Clinton Police Department fixed asset inventory after we sell it, and then the monies from the sale put into the vehicle purchase line item of the twenty-two budget, that's the first one.
Are you selling one or two?
I'm wanting to sell two, but I think because of the way it works, Dina wants me to do them separately.
Oh, okay, one at a time, I'll.
Yes. I have a motion, my motion was, I'll sell one, twenty thirteen?
Yes, twenty thirteen.
Now you gotta say everything she says.
Much of the way.
Everything else they said.
I've been living with it for a week.
To the water department and take it off fixed assets after it's sold.
Okay.
I'll say it.
Any other discussion? I'll ask for a vote.
Barnes.
Yes.
Bradley, yes, Hastings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Pistol.
Yes.
Ward.
All right, the second one is to sell a twenty fourteen Dodge Ram van seven six one five to Clinton Water Department for seven thousand dollars, take off the Clinton Police Department fixed asset inventory list after the sale.
Go ahead. I'm gonna make the motion, I'm just gonna wait.
Monies from the sale put into the vehicle equipment line item of the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two budget.
Did I ever sell moved as a motion? Well, I could do that, I could do second, I make a motion, we sell the twenty fourteen Dodge Ram van seven, seven six fifteen, Clinton Water Department for seven thousand dollars, take it off the Clinton Police Department fixed asset, this inventory after the sale, and then the monies from the sale put into the equipment line item of the twenty twenty-two budget. A motion, I hear a second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Thank you. Second, ask for a vote.
Barnes.
Yes.
Bradley, yes, Hastings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Pistol.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Third was the cameras?
No, he wants to purchase a twenty twenty-two Ford Explorer for thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Yes.
That's a easy one.
I'll make a motion that we purchase a one twenty-two Ford Interceptor for thirty-eight thousand?
Thirty-eight thousand?
Thirty-eight.
I'll say it. Uh, motion second, any other discussion? I'll ask for a vote.
Barnes.
So.
After, after the sale.
Oh.
After the sale, then you will buy, after the sale.
Yeah, 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 no, well, I mean, so, with the charger and this vehicle, we're still gonna have seven vehicles.
We'll have eight, because I'll still have our old part-time charger that we're keeping for, for a spare vehicle, so, yes.
We're not losing any vehicle, we're just changing the vehicle.
Correct.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, they're not making the Dodgers anymore.
Correct.
But you're gonna sell them to the water department, so they're not making them.
No, no, they're not making the Dodds charge a car.
Car, you're selling trucks.
I'm selling trucks.
You're selling the trucks, okay, I got it, because I thought now we're gonna have.
He sold the trucks.
I mean, listen, I've got a really old charger that if he wants it out.
I don't want a charger.
Now, now for future, just curious for future or whatever, do you know a comparison between a Dodge pickup, a crew cab truck or whatever, and the interceptor cost?
Truck's cheaper, but also, the problem with the trucks is why I'm trying to get out of them, these, these crew cab trucks are not made for police work, so that's why we're having lifters go out, that's why brakes are burning up, that's why the four-wheel drives are going out, and that's why I'm wanting to get rid of them. Particularly on the fuel costs, those trucks are eating me up in fuel, with the price of fuel nowadays.
The state bid on the truck is higher than that now.
Oh, okay, I didn't even look at the state bid.
I looked, I talked about, I talked to them last year when I picked up our truck, and we went, and they told me the next year it would go up to six thousand dollars, and last year it was thirty-two thousand.
Well, my thoughts are, it does kind of benefit the water department to be able to buy the truck, you're not gonna want the interceptor, a little SUV probably, the next time this comes around, so, that's my question.
I still got two trucks floating around, Mr. Hastings.
So, okay, we're gonna keep the water department, we're gonna do.
With the water department, I don't need to go as from zero to whatever he tries to go, you know, if my guys go that fast, they're gonna get in trouble, so, if they don't go that fast, it's great, I just need them to be good dependable, and I've tested both of these, and our, the water department, it's gonna make our fleet better, so.
Motion second, any other discussion on the purchase of the car? I'll ask for a vote.
Barnes.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Hastings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Pistol.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Thank you, I think that brings us to. Cameras.
Now the third item?
Is for the, um.
Cameras.
Body and dash cams, and all the contract stuff, that's what it.
You're getting all your budget out in February, you'll be out of money.
Do what?
Because you're getting all your money upfront this year.
That way, next to the rest of the council meetings, get my report, any questions?
That's right.
Well, there'll be plenty, don't you worry.
Ordering it now, those won't get it until next year.
Yeah, I won't get the carts on it, no, it's, it's actually on the way.
You're gonna do a motion? Here we go.
I'm gonna spend seventeen thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars for the vehicle equipment line item to purchase the last year's payment to the digital.
First.
Two, first, I'm sorry, first year's payment to digital ally. For new body and dash cameras.
And that's machinery and equipment, I think, right, Dina? It shouldn't be vehicle equipment, it should be machinery and equipment.
Machinery equipment, well, you told me vehicle, that's why I was.
I'm, today was crazy, I apologize.
I'll just make the freely amendment to whatever.
Are you sure it's machinery?
Yes, ma'am. Machinery equipment, yes, ma'am.
Machinery and equipment.
Okay.
Got that? Machinery equipment, we got a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? I'll ask for a vote.
Barnes.
Yes.
Bradley, yes, Hastings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Pistol.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
I think that brings us to the report system.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
You want to do fifty-three? Dana, you have that to tell.
Yeah.
No, I'm gonna, uh, make a motion. Oh, yes, okay, to re, repost.
No, for the report and evidence.
Oh, yes, okay, excuse me, uh, make a motion.
I want it. Okay.
Your zaino votes are not making that.
Report and evidence management system contract with Civic Eye Technologies, fifty-three hundred dollars from computer hardware and software line item.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
We got a voter.
Yeah, yeah, a motion, and we get a second.
Yeah.
Sorry, jumped in, any other discussion? I'll ask for a vote.
Barnes.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Hastings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Pistol.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that.
Have anything else that you want, remember a meeting?
A what? Let me see, a new ladder truck?
I'll get back in on this conversation with Mark Robinson.
A new ladder truck or the helicopter, I don't know, I mean, I got a great wish list.
He's got all the helicopter next week.
But no, this, this, this is it for this month, thank you.
Did you, we include in there to make two fit, do you, do you need equipment for those, or for those new vehicles?
Yeah, it's, it's all in the, it's all in the.
It's all in, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't hear it.
Yes, sir.
Anything else for the police department?
And this was all in your budget?
Yes, ma'am.
This is all in your budget?
Except for selling the truck to him, and then using that money to offset the purchase price of the vehicle.
I know, I'm just making that on the record.
Yes, ma'am, sure.
For people to know that this is not extra.
Yes, ma'am, the dash cams and the reports were already something that I budgeted for the twenty twenty-two, I just didn't know that I needed to have a separate line item.
Right.
On the dash cams and stuff, the cams and, that we have, cars now and the, what you have, anything you can do with it?
Okay, well, we don't have dash cameras in the car now.
No, done?
None.
I thought there was.
There was, when Chief Parrish was still here, we bought refurbished ones, and they hit the end of their lifespan, and then they quit, they completely quit on us, almost all of them, about four years ago, and so they got phased out, and then our body cameras that we currently have, we're gonna go ahead and keep, so that way, if we have an equipment malfunction on one of the current ones, or we're waiting for it to go get refurbished as part of the contract, then our officers will have something on them all the time.
You hadn't set up a voucher vest in a long time, were they all to date?
Yes. All our body armor's in date, I think, to be honest, I think mine's probably the oldest, and it'll come up next year, but there's a program with the Arkansas Chiefs of Police Association where if we purchase it, they refund half the purchase price, and there's also a grant I'm looking into that the federal government will buy us body armor. So, now that, I'm actually starting to work on that for next year, so.
That's some of the help on the reporting system, you told me too.
Yes, yes.
Anything else for the chief?
I was just gonna ask, how, how is the animal patrol thing working out, is that going smooth, or y'all picking up the dogs and cats? Y'all, are you?
Uh, it's going. Um, we, you know, obviously, we've had some, uh, fits and starts and bumps down the road, like any, any new job that anybody's gonna take. We finally got three quarters of our animal patrol equipment in now. Uh, if you saw when you pulled up, I've got a crate in the back of my truck, I've got the catch pole and, uh, some other equipment. Uh, crate will be in our other truck that we're keeping, um, along with the catch pole and all that, so I think now that we've got, now that we've got the equipment in and ordered, um, I think a lot of it's gonna smooth out. Our biggest issue now, um, is the same thing that Deputy Pike had when he was going, um, when the shelter's full, I just, we do the best we can, um, try to solve it one way or the other. But so far, so good, we haven't had any complaints, that we're not taking, taking the calls or anything, unless you guys have heard something that I haven't.
I have, my only dog was found the owner, so I'm happy about that, I'm sure that'll change.
I had one wander up and adopt my wife, so I, I now have a new dog.
I think we'll talk about that. I don't know how that works. Uh, anything else for the chief? Thank you. Brings us down to water and sewer department, Will Henshaw.
Okay, uh, as far as water loss goes, Bernard Water System was eleven percent water loss, Burnt Ridge is still torn on the side, it's fifty one percent. That is actually up from last month. And then, as far as the whole entire system that we feed is at twenty five percent, the whole, uh, Clinton system was twenty five percent water loss. So, uh, we were looking, we got a new board member, like, we were talking about earlier, John Treese had his first board meeting tonight, so we kinda went over the back dates, uh, in twenty twenty two, in January, um, Clinton water loss was at forty eight percent. And in twenty twenty one, it was at thirty one percent, and we were at twenty five percent this year, so we are making some progress. Uh, cost of, chemical cost for this last month was nine cents per thousand for the treatment of the water. Uh, did have a couple of good things to report, um, I think, yeah, the seventeenth, next Thursday, we have a onsite, uh, pre-game, or pre-construction meeting with the contractors that's gonna finish up the pole yard. They said they've got everything, they're ready to start, I knew Tim, I knew you'd like it, but anyway, uh, and if you would like to attend that meeting, I think it's at ten AM, and if not, I'll, if I'm not a hundred percent on the share, I'll check, I'll, got an email. But we're gonna meet onsite and look at a couple of things, just to make some final decisions on a couple of things, but they're ready to get started, and, uh, we're gonna do that seventeenth. Um, other project funding and stuff like that, we've taught, you've heard me talk a couple of times about this infrastructure bill that was gonna be, that was up there, well, the infrastructure bill was passed, um, but we really didn't know a whole lot of details about it. So, the engineers that we work with have been trying to find more information for us, uh, there was twenty seven million allocated, and out of that twenty seven million, uh, forty nine percent of that can be used through S. Grant, and then the other part will be as a loan, and they have given that money to ANRC to disperse. So, ANRC will be handling that, we are gonna have a meeting next week with the engineers to see if any of those line items we have on the tenure plan would qualify, and if so, when we got our bond, it would go to another project that's on the tenure plan, 'cause we've talked about it, the money we're gonna bond is not gonna cover the whole tenure plan, so, uh, that's really good news. Uh, sometimes, ANRC, you gotta, you know, go through, it takes a little bit longer to get stuff, but, you know, we'll always take grant money, I mean, grant money, so we're gonna see what would apply. On top of that, twenty seven million was another eleven point three million that was line item and allocated just for emerging contaminants, and this is gonna be decided on EPA, so this would be like on the ADQ, the wastewater side, and we do have a couple of things, we've got the water treatment plant, that we have the correction action order at the water treatment plant to pretreat it before it goes back into the lake, we think that'd qualify, like I said, it'd be decided through EPA, and, uh, and then the other one would be the cadmium deal. Uh, we've talked to ANRC, and ANRC goes to EPA to see if it qualifies, so I think those two projects would really, we could get funding on that, I know the eleven million's not gonna go a long ways in wastewater, uh, but if we can get some of it, it'd be great, and that also will be forty nine percent, uh, grant, and then the other fifty one percent would be, have to be loaned. With doing that, we can't, if we get the grant side of it through ANRC, you'd also have to get the loan side. So that would be a decision that I would come back after setting down, and if they accept it, you know, we would probably take that part out of the bond. We'd pick out what line item, we'd take off that tenure plan for the bond and put it towards this grant and funding through ANRC. Uh, I did check, we have two loans through ANRC right now, one of them is the, uh, the meter project, and it's not got a percent on the interest, it's just got a half percent service charge, and then the other one is on the clarifier, and on it, I was just trying to figure out a percentage, like, like what their rate was gonna be. So, I looked on it, and we have a two percent on it plus a one percent service charge, so there's a three percent, or it's almost three percent, I think it's one point something here, but it's almost three percent. So just, that's kind of the interest rate you might be looking at, it might be a little cheaper than the bond, but we'll find out more details and I'll report to you. But I did have that, and, uh, thank you for approving the purchase of the, the vehicles on that, I did have money allocated for new vehicles, so this is gonna help us also. After purchases in these two vehicles and I retire the vehicles, I'm gonna take, taking out, our oldest vehicle will be, that we're actually got on the road, would be an O-line, so that helps us out tremendously.
So we should be saving money by not reading meters going.
As far as dr- getting around, driving, wearing, very, oh, yes.
Driving or driving the trucks, can you tell a difference in that?
Oh, yeah.
Definitely.
Doesn't that take like three or four days for one person to do that?
Uh, we actually didn't just use one person, we usually use about five people, and it took right at five days for five people to get all the meters read.
So the meters are doing good?
Yes, uh, you know, of course, we still have co- some complaints, we had our first one during this cold spell that actually cracked and busted, uh, ended up being a customer issue with the lids left off and everything, and I will say this, as we're on Facebook and stuff, uh, when the weather does get low, if you can put those lids back on, whether you've taken it off for, to look and see if you had a leak or something like that, just make sure those lids are back on, and it helps keep them from freezing. But, you know, out of the, as many meters as we got out there, like three thousand meters, one has busted so far in the last two years, two winters we've had them in, so.
You still always have some you have to go physically read, don't you?
We have a few, uh, this last month, we actually had, uh, Badger, our Badger rep through Henner come back out, and there were some that just continued to be on the, and the, go out and read list, so they actually changed a couple of those endpoints, we're hoping there's gonna be a few that change. There are some gonna be out ninety five west that we'll just never be able to read, it's not good enough cell service out there, uh, but, you know, we do them on the day, we usually have two guys on the day that we read meters, after we read them, it prints you out a list of the ones that did not read, and it's, it's what two guys can go out and do in a half a day, we usually do it after lunch, and they're read by the end of the day, so, you know, we're usually about, I think we're around anywhere from forty eight to sixty out of the whole system we have to go out and officially read.
That one that busted, is that gonna be under warranty?
It's not under warranty as far as through Badger, because they don't do any kind of like, uh, they don't do freezing, they don't do lightning or anything like that, the only thing that they would warranty is it not having the, it not reading correctly, so.
So, because the customer didn't put the lid on it, is that gonna be responsible, or the water department?
That customer will be billed.
Oh.
It's, it's, so. It's about two hundred and eighty four dollars.
I got a praise, but about three weeks ago, something, my family left it on, left a, a water hose on, and it got me, about a day, I've only lost like four hundred gallons because of it, so it worked.
I looked on, I took the extra time of the day, I usually have one guy that goes out every morning, and he takes a look at, at Beacon, and then we go out, and we at least try to call the highest ones that show up on there, and I call up, uh, out of the office, I think I called about six people today, and they were all pretty high. You know, we had one customer that was eighteen thousand gallons the last two days, so, you know, normally, like I said, we might miss everybody, I still encourage everybody to get that Eye on Water app, because we might still miss it, but before this, it was every thirty days, it wasn't, you didn't catch anything like that until it got out there and physically got read again, so. I do encourage everybody to get that app, it does not cost the customer anything, we pay the service charge at the water department for that, so it does not cost the customer anything, but I do recommend everybody get that Eye on Water app, if you have trouble getting it, come by the office, we'll walk you through it.
I was gonna ask, how much, how much of that decrease in water loss do you attribute to the new meters?
I don't feel, I mean, our guys are always out looking for water leaks, but they always pop back up, I can almost contribute almost all of them to that, because we're not changing anything we're doing. It makes us look better, and we had that same discussion with the, when we did our, uh, sanitary survey with the health department, they come around, and they, they know, they know what our water loss used to be, we re, we have to report that to them yearly, and they asked the question, why did your water loss go down? And that was my answer, is we did a meter changeout program. And then, whenever they sent their final report, their recommendation to get our water loss down lower was do a meter changeout, so, but anyhow. Yeah. But I do, I really do, I, I think it was a good, it was, it was good for the water department, um, it, it first hindered the customers, 'cause they were not used to paying for all that water that was going through the meter, um, but I think a lot of customers now do appreciate the Eye on Water, and they can go out and check it and see if it hits down.
Thanks, anything else for? Appreciate it. Uh, brings us down to zoning department, Tim Clark.
Uh, Stephen Miller came up today with SafetyCom, and me and him worked to, uh, check out all of our weather alarm systems to make sure we're in tip-top shape, so ready for a stormy season, hope we don't have any, but at least our alert system is, as of right now, in tip-top shape, and we're ready to go. McDonald's is going to do an interior remodel, facelift on the inside, should be starting in the next, I don't know, couple of weeks, uh, just the front part, counters and drink dispensers and things like that, but they're gonna give the interior a facelift. Walmart is doing a couple of more remodels, I think they do about six or eight of these a year. First one, that contractor's gonna be up on the roof, that's all, air conditioning units and mechanical stuff and condensers. Uh, the second one is inside, and y'all know, they all came through, and there's one employee checkout lane, and then the rest of them are self-checkout, and now they're going to come back, and they're going to add some more employee checkout lanes, so.
That's good news, a lot of folks, though.
Sometimes the new idea works good, sometimes it's almost, so, uh, they're gonna come back and, uh, add some more checkout lanes, H&R Block and State Farm building is complete. Mexican Restaurant, they say they're still on hold waiting for materials, so I don't know what that material is, but it must be somewhere way out to sea, so, and that's all I got.
A lot of people are waiting materials, that's unbelievable. Anything else out of, uh?
The complaint we had over on sixty five B, is that under control, or?
I don't know anything about it. Yes, yes, we had a.
Making headway?
Yeah.
Are you talking about the call we got other than that, that I got, I think you got one too.
Yeah, but the junk cars?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's been a problem for a long time.
Did you say junk?
They make sure that they're junk, right?
Who you sell that S. ten to?
Yeah, it adds to that product.
First thing I thought of.
Some of that stuff, you know, he's fixed it, they don't come back and get it, they don't have the money, it just sits there, I don't know how long, some of it's been sitting there for quite a long time, and, you know, he has agreed to get rid of the stuff that's been there for a long time, and I asked him if he would consider putting up a privacy fence, uh, so those vehicles that are sitting out there won't readily be seen by everybody, and he said he would be willing to do that, and.
Yeah, 'cause I think there's an ordinance on the books that says that has to be done, it has to be a privacy fence, if you're.
Yeah, I think, I think you oughta have to put up a fence if you don't move all of them out of, 'cause we have lost the complaints all day.
The L and E building over there, the privacy fence was put up specifically for that reason?
No, he, he said he has no problem doing that, so.
All right. We shall see. Speaking that, I've, I've got call, a good call, well, not a good call, on the noise, uh, we talked a while back about our noise ordinance, right now we just have decibels, mostly geared around, uh, but I wanna incorporate with Jay, and we talked about loud music and stuff, I wanna work on that, and I'm, I'm accusing the city attorney of losing that folder, but I think it's on me, he says it's not over there, but it doesn't matter, uh, and this one was crow and roosters, and so I wanna get with you, and you, and you, and, you know, this coming week, and let's jump on that, because you, you need something if someone's playing just, you know, as of right now, can you walk up and?
I, I can, I, I can, I can catch the roosters and put them in the dog box. Now, on loud music, I can knock on the door and ask politely for the.
That was on main, on, on, on the music.
Yeah, I, I can ask politely, that's about all I can do.
So we don't have an ordinance for, for music, for loud, loud?
We have jake brakes, we have ordinance against jake brakes.
We started on the jake brake, yeah, the more I looked at it, I thought, eh, we sure need to find tuning, it's kinda like the handbook we talked about, and, and we need to do that.
You're gonna have to control roosters, though, seriously.
It, it has come up.
I don't want something that you can't, 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 there's some things, and you specifically mentioned it, as of right now, I just always assume, hey, that's too loud, you know, you know, I have to turn it down, but something that it was obviously.
So, I, I've got a couple sample policies of some noise ordinances from around the state that I was gonna get with Chad and you and.
Municipal.
Yeah. Um, and also, I know we've got the city ordinance for the, uh, jake brakes, one of the biggest complaints I get, I'm sure you guys get, is on these trucks. Not necess- not necessarily coming down the hill into Clinton, I mean, I would rather them hit a jake brake than burn a brake off and wrecking, hurt somebody, but we've been getting complaints in front of Walmart where it's flat and level, that they're jamming the jake brakes down, and I talked to the, the, uh, the R.D.O., uh, highway patrolman here, he said he would be more than happy to help us with that enforcement. But we need to reset the city ordinance signs at the north and south city limits before he'll do that. So at some point, we need to see about making that happen now that they've cleared the construction. So now that our city limit signs are back in, we're good to go, we need to see about setting those back up, and then we can start enforcing that jake brake ordinance.
We need to do that.
So next one, the jake brake coming off the hill?
Right.
Cause it, it's a useful, and you've, and we went through, you can't say jake brake, 'cause that's a brand, it's decompression.
Right. Yeah, it's compression brake, and, yeah.
I think they can still run a jake brake, they just can't run a non-muffled
Yeah.
compression brake.
Unmuffled compression brake, yeah.
Most of them have muffles, some of them don't.
Yeah, some of these log trucks come through.
Yeah, they don't have, I hear them at the shop.
And like I said, with the signs, I'm sure the city attorney, if he ever had to prosecute one of these cases, would really, really appreciate that we had a sign up saying, hey, look, you can't do this.
Right.
So.
Yeah, it's, yeah, definitely need a sign. Yeah, I know, uh, some municipalities have run into issues because there was a time when people just put no jake brake.
Right.
Jake, Jacobs brake is a, is a brand, and they prefer people not to say their brakes are terrible, so.
Right.
Engine compression braking, you know, as a general.
I think truckers will be aware, they'll know, you know.
Would keep us from getting sued.
Sure. So like I said, I, you know, that's one of the biggest complaints that we get, that is quality of life complaints, so we need to see about, you know, getting those signs up, and then, like the mayor said, I'll get with Chad and, uh, Tim about some of these policies that we've got, uh, for ordinances, some sample ordinances.
Well, my noise, the, the noise ordinance, could, does that have to be a whole ordinance, or we just like amend our nuisance ordinance to include that?
Well.
That's a nuisance, I mean.
I mean, it probably needs to fit somewhere, you know, somewhere in that group, group, somewhere, somewhere in that, just as far as organization or anything, but we'll, we'll.
Say be a part of.
We'll need to put something together. We'll need to put something together, have a package together. I, I'll just have, in, in the interim, because this is gonna take a little time for us to put something together and, and in the interim, I mean, i, i, if someone is intentionally, intentionally, you know, doing loud music or something with an intention to annoy the neighbor, we can do things about that. So I'm gonna put that out there so someone doesn't go home tonight, watch Facebook and then turn it up and make the neighbor mad. If you're doing something to intentionally harass someone, there's a harassment charge that we can, that we can deal with, but we need to probably just take a step further and talk about noise in general, so.
Well, you've been busy tonight, anything else for that guy, Jay or, or Tim for zoning?
D L got the last four, so I thought it was my turn.
Anything else on zoning? Thank you.
Now, one thing that I did not do when it was my turn is you guys took the time to pass all these around to each other. So this is your annual financial reports. All three of those sheets, you have seen part of those, the only part you had not seen is, they're color coded, the yellow one, two thousand twenty-two versus two thousand twenty-one, and you've seen the other ones all except the last quarter on that second page. So you got the difference between on the, on the fourth quarter between two thousand one, two thousand twenty. So the sewer revenue difference in that last quarter, just that last uh, quarter there was ten thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars. And the water revenue difference between the two years was uh, thirty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And then next you have the difference in the whole year. So January to December, the difference between those two years on the sewer side was thirty-seven thousand three hundred and eleven dollars and the water revenue side was two hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-three cents. Sixty, six, two hundred, ninety-six dollars and six hundred, yeah, got it, thank you. Should've handed this to Barnes.
Give that, give that to Deena, she'll read it.
Yeah, I don't need to give that to Deena, she'll read it.
Anything else for Tim or Will or any of those guys at that table? Thank y'all. That brings us down to unfinished business and ordinance in relation to council members' four-year stagger terms. This is a, a term of, uh, city council seeks in four-year terms for the stagger occurring, so uh, after next year, I guess, or two years, it'll be, can't end up with six new council members, which may or may not be a good idea, or who knows, but it's good to stagger. Uh, so I'll entertain a motion in the second to place this on the second reading by title.
I'll motion to place this on the second reading by title.
Any discussion? I'll ask for a vote.
Barnes?
Yes.
Rowland? Yes. Postings?
Yes.
Lunch?
Yes.
Hostel?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
This is an ordinance referring to voters in Clinton, Arkansas, the questions of whether to change the terms of the council members from two-year to four-year terms by electing every two years one council member from each ward in a four-year term, thus resulting in staggered terms pursuant to Arkansas Code amated fourteen forty-four one oh three to set a date for such election and for other purposes. And you're always gonna come to city hall and put your input, that's just to get it on the ballot for this fall and let the folks decide if they wanna do that or not. I think it's probably a good idea. That brings us down to new business, which is a Blue and New Mini Grant, I'll let, uh, Deena's been busy tonight, so I think this is a two thousand dollar.
It's up to two thousand dollars, it's a, Teresa Gates from the Van Buren County Health Department wants to um, work with us because they would have to run it through our accounts, um, to do a Blue and New Mini Grant to fill the blessing boxes in Clinton. And um, it would be up to two thousand dollars if she applies for it and gets it.
And she'd like to go through the city to do that.
It has to go through.
I think it's by the courthouse and over by the police station. So I'll entertain a motion in the second to approve that. Apply for that.
Make the motion.
How's like it?
Any discussion? I'll ask for a, although.
Barnes?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Postings?
Yes.
Lunch?
Yes.
Hostel?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Brings us to public comments.
I, I got a question or two. Yeah, no. The, the ordinance about the extending the terms and staggering them, I've been thinking about that and I'm trying to understand in theory, if all six of you were to be replaced at one election, what would be the negative effect of that on me? As a citizen, you know, as a, as a resident in Clinton. That's what I, I've just been trying to figure out, that's been the argument is we don't want them all to be replaced at the same time, but I couldn't figure out what difference it makes to.
It's also possible, cause every, every, every election cycle, we have either the mayor or the clerk is up for reelection. So we could also have the mayor or the clerk replaced and a whole council replaced.
Right.
You always have, run that risk of that happening, as long as you have a two-year term.
Yeah, what I'm wondering is what's the danger in that happening? I can't, I haven't been able to come up with an idea.
I don't know if I would call it a danger, but I, I just know that I was, when I was elected, that it, it took about two years because I, I came in with no experience on anything about municipal government other than wanting to learn about municipal government and serve the citizens of, of Clinton the best way that I can. And it does, it does take you uh, some training to go to and some things to feel comfortable about uh, making decisions about what the city faces. And so, let's just say hypothetically, two thousand and fourteen, all the city council and the, and the mayor was brand new. We already knew, I'm not picking on the water department, we knew what the problems were with the infrastructure, with the water department. If that came, you could probably safely say that that kid would have probably kicked down the road another at least two to four years down the road that we didn't have, that the city really didn't have. So you have things that are crucial in, in municipalities that happen where you need to have some people on there that kinda have an understanding of uh, of the direction it either needs to continue to go or uh, maybe just keep on the, on the show for a while. Uh, so it's just not, everybody's just kinda brand new, because it, it wasn't a question of what was gonna happen uh, with the infrastructure, it was just when was the catastrophic event gonna happen? Because there was a catastrophic, catastrophic event that was going to happen. And so, you know, I just put that as a hypothetical that, you know, but personally for me, it, it took some time to get some training, to go to some municipal meetings, to do some things where I felt like I was competent to make the, uh, educated decision about what the city was, was looking at.
Now, I second the same thing Tim just said, is I know on my history that, you know, that first year or something, you're just kinda sitting back watching and trying to understand and, and learn everything. Um, the other side of it, I think of it is, you, you know, i, if you're coming in new, everybody else, if, if, if they're not new per se, they're more of a, you know, seasoned person. So they, they do kinda know what hap, what was happening last year, the year before and, and got a, an idea. So that's the reason why I look into it more and wanted to do that, stagger.
It was a former city council person that actually came to me and said, hey, why, you know, we tried this a couple of years ago, he was on the council and it didn't go. He said, y'all need to look at doing that, and I got to thinking, and I thought about it myself, you know, several times and I said it's, and I looked at it, the timing was right. We could get it, I mean, I don't wanna have a special election, pay for, you know, having a special election, put it on the ballot in November, it won't cost the city anything and the citizens can decide if they wanna do that or not.
And I, I think so too, that we're, we live in this day of age now where people just, you know, they come up with any kind of a conspiracy theory as to the motive why someone does something. Nobody on this city council, the mayor, no one, clerk, we don't have a dog in this hunt at all. I think it's great that our city gives our citizens the opportunity to make decisions about how this city goes forward. So we don't have, nobody has a dog in the hunt. Nobody's gonna, nobody's gonna be a, get a plus or a minus, it's just, those people, the citizens are coming, want this? Yes or no, if they do, great, if they don't, great, we're, we're still moving, we're still moving forward, but, you know, for someone to, to to say, whoa, that's just them doing this because they're, and they come up with some kind of, you know.
It's, it's gonna be a slow process, I mean, it, it, if it passes in November, it'll be the next election before anybody even gets voted into a four-year term, you know. And me personally, I don't even know if I'm gonna run this time, you know, I, I don't know until it gets closer than that, I mean, I mean, so, you know. I'm not looking at it as something to benefit me personally or benefit the city council, I, I just look at it as, you know, twenty, thirty years from now, I'm retired and sit at my house and then all of a sudden, I'll read the Facebook or whatever news we have in thirty years and, oh, we got a whole new council and, and I'm like, I don't know if that would be a good idea or not, you know, got a new mayor and a new council and, and nobody knows what's going on down there. Cause somebody got mad and there was some political thing and uh, a bunch of people started and decided to run and put everybody out, so, yeah. If I was not on the council, I would still think it was a good idea, I would hope for it, so it's, it's not anything I, I see as.
And there, and there's not any agenda of going from a two-year term to a four-year term, it's the fact that's the only way you can do it. That's the only way you can make a stagger, like that.
Good question.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that from, from all of you. The, one other thing I had is, last time you were here, Gail, right before the November meeting, you were at the time unable to reside in the city, are you now residing in the city?
I guess, I'm back in my.
In Ward, thank you, glad to hear that.
Anything else, Don?
I'm the one who made the complaint about the business on sixty-five, I have heads up.
Can you come on up for that?
I have this one on sixty-five business and I have put up with these people across the road from me for years. I've put up with their arguing, their language, their burning rubber in the middle of the street. I mean, all it takes is one bad neighbor to bring the whole neighborhood down. And so I have decided to get away from them and sell my property. I have not been able to sell it because when people come look at my property and they see that, they want nothing to do with it. I mean, it's ruining our, our, the looks of it, looks bad on our town anyway. And there are ordinances against that and we can't expect some businesses to follow these ordinances and let some just slide by because they're good old boys. I'm tired of hearing they're just good old boys, that's what I've been told. I'm tired of being looked over about this, um, you know, they get complaints and they'll start cleaning up a little bit and then next thing you know, it's junked up again. So yes, I wanna see some time limits, I'm getting a fence put up, I wanna see things get done. If not, I will do what I have to do to make sure it does because I'm tired of it. I'm a business owner in this town and it's aggravating to be looked over when I'm expected to follow these ordinances myself.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? Brings us down to uh, mayor's comments.
Hi, I have a question, we need to discuss, um, I'm gonna have to discuss Jessica Bonfire. Jessica Bonfire?
Yeah, I've.
Did you talk to her?
I've talked to her, yeah, we're gonna bring it up to next.
The next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
I'll talk to her.
Okay, alright, so March. Aside from.
Brings us down to mayor's comments, we have a, C G Bolden is this uh, month, Thursday, the twenty-third. It's gonna be at nine o'clock at the Clinton Auditorium. Had a really good experience today and just met a World War Two veteran from the county and uh, made my day. And so, still putting that program together, if you have any suggestions for that, that's where all three school districts come together and hear a speaker talk about freedoms aren't free. Uh, it'll be, start at nine, probably out at about ten thirty or eleven, I'd encourage you to come to that, that's at the Clinton High School Auditorium, it's on a Wednesday, February twenty-third at nine o'clock. Uh, mentioned, did a good job, police and street department on the I C Rose deal and all of you guys, Charles got out there really early. It could've been a lot worse, I was glad to see that freezing rain turned him asleep. Uh, Paula, I think I, I said I'd mention, I'm March the eighth at six P M at the Van Buren County Fairgrounds are gonna have a uh, debate or kind of a roundtable for folks that are running for office and it's kinda geared more a lot for the county officials at times, that's coming to a head. But everyone is encouraged to attend that, Corinne and Paul and all them did a really good job with that, so that's on the, March the eighth on a Tuesday, I believe, at six o'clock. And finally, saw big Robert Smith walking downtown today and he's come a long way and he's well and he's getting around slow and gets tired quick, but he's made amazing strides and he thanks everybody for their prayers and well wishes and everybody else has been sick. And I know Nina, her man's back uh, working and that's good, so, that's all I've got, uh, nothing else. Have a good rest of the evening and weekend, I entertain a motion in the second to adjourn.